Do I need to hit the gavel again? I just like doing that. Welcome everyone to Lancaster City Council. Roll call please.
City Council member, Agency Director, Authority members Doris.
Present.
Molly.
Present.
Mann.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman, Chris.
Present.
Mayor, Chairman, Paris. Absent.
Move to excuse Mayor Paris.
Second that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Invocation. John, how are you?
Good thanks. Thank you for doing this. Let's all stand. Lord, we thank you for your goodness to us and your love for us for sending Jesus Christ to this earth. Lord, I pray your blessing upon our city. Lord bless those who serve us. Father, the Sheriff's Department. Father bless them with all that they do to protect us and to help us in difficult times. Lord bless the kids as they're out of school now. Lord help them to be safe and have fun. Father bless the parents, give them peace. And Lord bless the City Council tonight with all the decisions they have to make. Lord give them wisdom in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks John. Ken, you do the pledge first?
Sure. Everybody turn and face the flag, put your right hand over your heart and believe with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Get right into the consent calendar. Anything need to be pulled?
No sir.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that the consent calendar be accepted as comprised.
Second that.
We have a motion second, let's vote. Passes with four yes votes. Okay.
Covered a lot of ground already.
I know.
All green lights. All green lights.
Okay, PH1. I'll open the public hearing. We have a staff report. Jocelyn?
Vice Mayor Chris, a member of the council. Before you tonight is the appeal of the Planning Commission approval for conditional use permit number 22-11. The project site is located at 431 East Avenue K4 in the city of Lancaster's Business Park. This is also the location of the city's former golf center and driving range. In 2019, the property was leased to Heliogen and they were approved for a hydrogen research and development facility. The original approval included the construction of a 55-foot tower, concentrating solar panels, and a perimeter access road. This area is shown in blue on the slide. In addition, the existing buildings and parking lot were used for office space. In 2022, Heliogen filed the conditional use permit for the expansion of the existing R&amp;D facility. The areas proposed for the expansion are shown in red. The proposed expansion consists of the installation of approximately 400 PV panels, a second 55-foot tower adjacent to the first tower, and associated hydrogen production and storage equipment. The PV panels would occur on approximately one-half acre and the new tower and associated equipment would be located primarily in areas that are currently paved. No commercial production of hydrogen or hydrogen fuel would occur at this location. This expansion would create 12 jobs over a three-month construction period. No new permanent jobs would be created. As part of the entitlement process, an initial study was prepared for the proposed project and circulated for a 30-day public review period, during which time a total of four comment letters were received from the Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District, Caltrans, a member of the public, and Adams-Broadwell. A second letter from Adams-Broadwell was submitted just prior to the Planning Commission meeting. All letters were reviewed by staff and provided to members of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission held a public hearing and approved the proposed project on March 20th, 2023. The public hearing included a review and discussion of the issues raised in all five submitted comment letters. On March 31st, Adams-Broadwell, representing Citizens for Responsible Industry, filed an appeal stating that the environmental document was inadequate and an environmental impact report was required. Issues were raised in eight general categories, including decommissioning, environmental setting, project description, air quality, public health including valley fever, biological resources, noise, and cumulative projects. Staff has reviewed the appeal and believes that the initial study does not require revisions necessitating recirculation, nor are there any significant impacts associated with the proposed project that would require the preparation of an EIR. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt Resolution number 23-41, upholding the Planning Commission decision by denying the appeal for conditional use permit number 22-11. Both my staff and the applicant's team are available to answer any questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Fetterman? Apologize.
That's okay. Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Kalila Fetterman. On behalf of appellant's Citizens for Responsible Industry, citizens filed an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of this project because the project results in significant environmental impacts requiring preparation of an environmental impact report pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. The city should uphold the appeal and remand the project to staff to prepare an EIR in order to comply with the law. Appellants submitted extensive comments supported by expert consultant reports which demonstrated that the MND failed to accurately disclose the extent of the project's potentially significant impacts on air quality, public health, hazards, biological resources, and noise. The comments of citizens highly qualified experts provide substantial evidence supporting a fair argument that the project will result in significant unmitigated environmental impacts in each of these resource areas such that an EIR must be prepared. First, our air quality and health risk consultant Dr. Phyllis Fox found that emissions from the project's hydrogen generating components will be more severe than the MND analyzed. These components may emit toxic air contaminants that exceed applicable thresholds which were not adequately analyzed or mitigated in the MND. Second, Dr. Fox determined that diesel particulate matter emitted during construction is likely to result in significant cancer and acute health risks to the nearby Sienna Heights apartments that are not reduced to levels of insignificance by the mitigation measures in the MND. Third, the project will be built in an area endemic for valley fever, but the MND fails to provide adequate mitigation to protect worker health and safety. The project's air emissions during construction and operation results in a nonconformance with the General Plan Policy 3.3.4 by citing a polluting industrial site immediately adjacent to sensitive receptors. The city must resolve both this land use inconsistency and mitigate the project's significant air emissions before the project can be approved. The MND also fails to analyze the project's potentially significant impacts to biological resources, namely the birds that may be killed by colliding with project components, and fails to mitigate significant noise and vibration impacts from the pile driving and other construction noise which were found by our acoustical consultants to exceed established thresholds. For these reasons and those addressed in citizens' comments to the city, we urge the City Council to uphold this appeal and remand the project to staff to prepare a legally adequate EIR which analyzes and mitigates the project's significant environmental, public health, and land use impacts. Thank you.
Are you familiar with everything that you just said?
Yes, I wrote the, I wrote this.
So the, is it PM 10 or PM 2.5?
Our expert found that both emissions will exceed applicable thresholds and be dangerous to the neighboring Sienna Heights apartment building.
To what level?
I don't have our letter with those numbers in front of me right now, but we submitted comments today and previously to the city at the Planning Commission level as well, which detail those figures and those exceedances of the, of the public health thresholds.
Any other questions?
I have none.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you said you submitted comments today?
Yes, we submitted supplemental comments today by email.
Okay, I just want to make sure they made it to the council because I had not seen them, so thank you.
Yes, they were submitted to the city clerks.
About 20 pages.
Just wanted to make sure it made it in the record, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion? Motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2341 upholding the Planning Commission's approval for conditional use permit 22-11 and adopting the mitigated negative declaration by denying the appeal.
So question before we vote. Voting yes says we upholding the Planning Commission's.
Voting yes upholds the Planning Commission and approves the project.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Second that.
We have a motion second, let's vote. Passes with four yes votes. New joint business. George?
We're gonna do the budget by committee, Vice Mayor and council. George will come up after Tralise and I. As you know, this time of year is for budget year all the time. Every year about June, first meeting in June, we have a public hearing or a meeting and then followed up by a public hearing with approval of the budget. Before I get started, I want to give a big shout out to our staff. First George and his team, Vidi. I don't see her in the audience. They've done an amazing job as well as all the department heads and budget leads putting this together. You again have a balanced budget in front of you and we're very proud of that. In at least my 28 years of doing this, we've never presented an unbalanced budget. So not to say it's not, not hard to do, but we've got a great staff that is budgets conservatively and operates their budget in a very efficient manner. So I'm gonna tell you what we have done last year with those resources you approved last year. Tralise is gonna talk to you about what we've got coming forward and then George is gonna bore you with the details. But most proud is we've, we've done a significant amount of capital improvement. $60 million last year's budget, 23 construction projects completed, $50 million in the road bond money that you guys authorized a number of years ago. In talking to our construction manager, Mike, he'd mentioned that since he's been here in six years, seven years, he's done $230 million of capital projects implemented and built in that period of time. So we had a robust capital project budget, including the renovation of Sky Tower Park, LPAC, City Hall. If those of you are familiar with our community, drive around. Our roads are new, our city hall's new, our parks are new and getting renovated. Our facilities are new and getting renovated. It's all, it's looking very good out there with almost a brand-new city and a lot of the facilities. And the ones that haven't been remodeled are planned to be remodeled this year. We've protected, built protected bike lanes, updated roads. Our pavement management program has been super effective in some of those slurry seals in our neighborhoods and the pedestrians and cyclist improvements have been noticeable as well. Sky Tower Park completely remodeled and updated. Our city hall renovations, you will be hopefully in the next month occupying an entirely remodeled city hall that will last us another 50 years. It's the kind of stewardship that this council has directed us to do in maintaining our facilities so that they last a long time. Lancaster will be here forever and we need to treat our facilities and assets as they, as they are. Moa and HVAC renovations, Moa has been closed for a number of months. In those HVAC renovations, those, those facilities now are able to house the most prestigious type and kind of art so that our shows can be, one, show that it can be, drop, drop in the world. Adjudicate, how to adjudicate it? Accredited, accredited, thank you. So the Moa is now accredited agencies so we can house all those facilities. And new recycled water lines and pipes. We've implemented a number of different programs from C&amp;B Seen to the Safer Streets Action Plan, partnering with Caltrans to clean up our right of ways and a significant amount of graffiti abated. We've got significant number of wins in our economic development team with the opening of Sprouts. We've got the Chick-fil-A just recently opened. There's 6 million square feet of industrial space being permitted currently. We, the award-winning Stand Strong program that you guys approved for COVID, which was a small business loan program, Operation Jump Start, reopening assistance, the restaurant rescue, all awarded by our economic development team and just did a fabulous job in getting us back on our feet from COVID. Our Parks team is diligently and has been diligently implementing our Parks programs. You've seen them this year, fully operational, Field of Drafts, Poppy Festival. They updated our Easter program, the mural walls program in our public arts, Monday Night Bites. The list goes on, from Halloween to Santa's Village. A fully operational, fully funded events program and calendar for Parks Department, as well as a significant level of capital investment with $2.7 million going into the Moa, which we talked about, Steve Owens Park, and Sky Tower Park, which we've already mentioned. The funnest one, and those of you who have ever visited our batting cages, they used to leave a little bit to be desired. They have been completely remodeled and updated, so when you get a chance to get out there, not only an asset for our athletes who are learning baseball and softball, but a fun time too, as you, as you well. So I know Marvin goes out there on a regular basis and hits bombs. We, not only have we taken care of our, our infrastructure from a, a, a brick and mortar perspective, but we also have a significant amount of infrastructure invested in grass. And we don't think of grass as infrastructure, but there was $637,000 in Parks facilities to improve our grass facilities. You can see the soccer center, we received numbers of plates. I think your council even received a few of those and said, "Let's fix it," and we did it this year. So an amazing work by our Parks staff. LPAC, fully operational season with a $1.2 million program, 25 season programs, 20 performances in residence, arts and youth programs, and a number of different accomplishments. But that is a state-of-the-art facility with new LED lighting, office space. And as you've, if you've ever attended, it is a well-maintained and manicured facility as well, which will last us and provide services to our community for a long, long time. Our community center is fully operational and open with classes. We've got preschool enrichment classes, we've got enrichment classes for children and teens. We've got neighborhood community cleanup events going on, other coffees with the deputies, family game and movie nights, playgrounds, and a number of different other amenities. And what you'll hear a little bit about more tonight is the fully implement, full implementation of our hybrid police model, which I know we've been talking about a lot of, but we've already begun that process and with including technologies with the flocks and the drone cameras, our graffiti tracker, which netted a restitution of $92,000 from those people who were committing those crimes. Step TED program where we're working with Business Watch and Neighborhood Watch going to those communities or going to those members, teaching them how to harden their targets with cameras and other security services. And then law enforcement special programs under Administrative Citation Program, which is ready to ramp up as we get new staff onboard. Rod's gonna talk to you a little bit more about that later. But we have a robust budget and that's what we've done and which is pretty impressive. Now Tralise is gonna talk to you about what we're going to do, which is also pretty impressive. So thank you guys for your time.
So thank you Jason. As Jason was saying, we had a tremendous amount of success last year and a tremendous amount of accomplishments. And what this budget will really show and as we go through where we're going, you're gonna just see more of that. So a lot of what I'm gonna say is redundant to what he's already saying. So what do we have this year? We have $170 million capital budget. That's $141 million in projects that are rolling forward and then $29 million in new projects that are added to this budget. The, the key that I want to point out here though is if you look back over the last five years, we've been investing in our infrastructure, about $60 to $80 million of construction projects actually getting completed on annual basis. So over that five years, you're looking at around a $400 million investment through the leadership of this council into the city. So it really hammers home the point that Jason was making early on that we really do have new parks, new facilities, new roads. Everything is new and, and this budget keeps that going. So what, what hasn't gotten done yet is gonna get done relatively soon. The, the key thing about this slide, it first shows the $29 million of new projects we're putting in it, but what I'd like to point out is this pie chart actually. So if you look on the right-hand side of it, that's all of our gas tax, sales tax, those revenues that we get. But what I want to point out is on the other side of the equation is state and federal grant. We have a grant team here in house that does a tremendous job in going out and they are actually able to double the amount of money we're able to put in our infrastructure. So for every dollar we have, we're able to get another dollar from the state and fed. So they've been very proactive about that. So what is, what's in this year's budget? Well, first, we've got $4 million to continue the design of this state-of-the-art event center over at the fairgrounds. This will also become our major evacuation center for the entire region. It gets this center here that you see depicted, but there's also a community kitchen component and then an auditorium that doubles as an emergency operations center. So this, we put two and a half million into it last year. This four million here, that's six and a half million, it fully funds the design. The design will be done at the end of this year. The construction should start March, April next year with completion of that summer of 2025. So we'll be open and operational for the fair of, of 2025. The thing I'd like to point out here too is that truly through the mayor and the vice mayor's leadership on this one, we've secured partnerships with Palmdale, the county, the state, and the federal government to fully fund this $90 million build out. And here's a sneak peek of actually, that gives you kind of the, the magnitude and scale of the beauty and technology that's going into this facility. You can see this is the lobby for that main event center and it's just, it's nicely done and then it has all the digital boards everywhere so that if there's an event going on inside, you're gonna be able to see, hey, what's the score of, you know, the 16 basketball games going on in there or whatnot. It's just, it's just gonna be an amazing facility. Truly an unrivaled place to have an event in, in the Antelope Valley. We got 1.9 million in renovation and improvements. New park equipment at Maryuposa Park, upgraded pool and locker room at Weber Pool. And then we are doing yard improvements and, and taking care of our, our public works yard so that they can be more efficient and, and get out there and be more proactive at maintaining all this new infrastructure that we have. We have 6.85 million in highway safety improvement grant funds. So our traffic team, they've been very, very proactive at going out, analyzing our roads, looking where are their hotspots. They went out, they applied for grants. So in this budget, you'll see there's, there's money for new crosswalks that are enhanced. There's 28 signal locations that'll get improvements and then they're gonna do five quick bill roundabouts throughout the city. We've got 5 million in pavement, so Jason alluded to that $50 million bond that we just finished over three years. This continues that momentum, there'll be five more million here. So when you turn the corner on an arterial, you should see new pavement out there. We've got 8.4 million in, what is this one? Active transportation grant money that we received to do Fifth Street East corridor to connect. There's three schools in this area, so you'll see sidewalks, bike lanes, all that so the kids out there can get to school in a safer manner. 500,000 for additional parks improvements, so this is the OMP Improvement Court. Exterior painting at Soccer Center, Moa Stanley Kleiner, more field rehab. I know Jason showed that photo up there, but we're gonna finish out the remainder of the softball fields and keep improving those soccer fields. And then we've got safety improvements at Jane Reynolds. Next up, 766,000 for our Tide Team. This is to continue that funding. They're out there, this past year they cleaned up 2,000 tons of illegal dumping. That was up 15% from the year prior. And they did 619,000 square feet of graffiti, which was up 21%. So much-needed team, they're out there making sure that our city stays clean and beautiful. We've got 1.1 million for our fleet transition and replacement. So currently we have 10 hydrogen vehicles. This will build upon that and keep that momentum rolling with the goal of us be having the first zero emission fleet in the country. 4 million for more landscape renovations. So this past year we did Avenue J and you can see some of the new landscaping there. We did parts of Avenue L. What this does, we actually got $2 million from Metro to finish out the remainder of the landscaping adjacent to the bike lane and put in a split rail fence so that that zero highway corridor is done. And then we have 2 million of local money which will complete out the Avenue L interchange and have it match the new interchanges of K and J when they're finished and, and those reconfigurations are done out there. 300,000 for a homeowner beautification program. So this is a program that really helps our code enforcement team. So if they're going out there, they're routinely hitting the same houses with the same code enforcement issues. We can instead say, hey, come on in, apply for a grant, get that $5,000 to redo your yard. So now we don't have to go out there and enforce it. So it's really helping better the community and make it more aesthetically pleasing. We got 1.5 million to, to ensure that our Lancaster Autumn Mall is visible from the 14 freeway and that there's good landscaping there so that people know what brands we have there and they're buying their cars locally in the city of Lancaster. Our festivals, so there's money in the budget to continue, the Haunt at the Hangar, Fields of Draft, Magical Boulevard, Poppy Festival. And then we also have this new event here that we got a grant from Metro, it's fully funding it. It will close down the Boulevard from 10th Street to Division. There'll be 10 activity hubs out there. There'll be music, food, you'll be able to walk, ride a bike, skateboard, you name it. It'll be a new exciting event, so mark your calendar September 16th. We have 1.8 to continue the LPAC operations. If you haven't bought your tickets yet, I recommend you did because I was talking to Julie out there that runs it and they had a really good season last year and sold out a lot of their, their venues that they were having. So expect the same this year. 1.4 million for that community center and this is that brand-new logo that was revealed last Friday at their kickoff summary event. Councilmember Doris was there and I think you can, you can attest to this, but the community came out, this facility has really become ingrained in the community in just a short time. We got 1.1 for more parks enhancements. This will be at Raleigh Duntley, new playground equipment. And then lastly, $3 million for the Antelope Valley remodel. This will become our state-of-the-art hybrid law enforcement or public safety headquarters. And with that, I'll turn it over to Rod before George comes up and bores you all to death.
Oh boy. All right, good evening, council. So I want to tell you a little bit about what we're doing with our public safety and hybrid police department. So first, 10.6 is gonna be used to completely fund and operate our hybrid policing program. We're already well down that road and have hired several pieces, but this absolutely includes our Lancaster hybrid police officers that are gonna supplement the existing sheriff's department resources and address long-term issues within the community. And then our technologies at 2.2. As you know, we brought the flock cameras, we've brought the graffiti tracker, we've upgraded many city cameras, but we are also bringing body cameras for our officers and that's in the realm of being transparent with the services that they're gonna provide out there and being able to pay attention and record all actions and everything they do. We are also implementing a, or building an intelligence crime analysis center. So this is gonna be an instrumental piece of our program that's gonna allow us to better address crime issues within the community, but just as importantly, will give us the much-needed ability to pay attention to our hydrogen plant and other structures within the city that we have to pay close attention to. So, and then our drone program and we're really excited about that. We're looking to continue to address issues within our city and provide oversight from the air with some of the programs that we do within the city. But in addition, we want to be able to give our officers some very good air support. So what I'd like to do is play this video. One more? There we go. We'll have the ability to stream that video down to any chosen iPad, phone, computer. It can operate within 40 mile an hour winds. And it has an active tracking mechanism where we can lock it on to a suspect vehicle and it will follow. Infrared night vision. Excuse me, flare night vision. Excellent zoom system. Excellent zoom system. I got to tell you, I mean, I'm, I'm from back in the 80s, 70s, but my drone pilot over there picked that music, not me. I'm not a Tom Cruise fan. We're excited about this program. It's going to give us the ability to give our officers and our city 10 to 16 hours of air support. Whereas with the current leap system, it's usually five hours a day or so. So we're really excited about what that's going to do to help with safety in our city. So, and then $700,000 because we are going to add to our code enforcement program. And, and what we're looking at is developing a program where we have several officers that are trained that can do code, parking, any of the things that happen within public safety about beautification of the community. We're, we're bringing in a concept of curb-in where we want to start at the street level and take care of issues out there, move in towards the community, educate and help the, the homeowners in understanding how to take care of their property and address any issues when we are unable to, you know, gain cooperation. So we're going to good places, we're excited and that is absolutely thankful to all of you up there for the great support. We thank you. And now we'll bring up the man of the hour, George.
I think we've already determined that this is the boring part of the show. Actually, I don't mind being the boring, boring part of the show because quite frankly, I actually enjoy seeing all the wonderful things we can do with the money that the city actually has and brings in. That's what gives us the excitement in our department, is not seeing a budget book fly, fly through four hands as two people get indulged in it. It's, it's actually getting out in the streets and seeing all the things that we're actually doing with that funding. That's what motivates us in our department, that's what motivates me to keep doing what we're doing. So here goes the boring part. So we do have a, the budget assumptions this year, as we go into each year, is to try to identify, excuse me, what is the focus of the, of the budget? What are we, what are we going to focus on? If, if money gets tight, what are the things that we need to maintain and make sure it keep going? And so with that, one, making sure that, that we do have an operationally balanced budget. And so that's something that Jason said he's had for, for a number of years. I've made sure that I've stayed committed to that over the years of my career. But making sure that your operational revenues match your operational expenditures is, is the number-one objective of writing a budget. We talked about the hybrid policing model and they've had their show. And that's, so we're very excited in our department to see that progress and see those folks come on board and, and be deployed out to the community. Hydrogen, hydrogen, hydrogen. So as much as we've been talking about it, we want to make sure that there are elements in this budget that, that continue that messaging through the communications and promotion, but is also, you know, we have to put our money where our mouth is. And we've been purchasing vehicles this last couple of years, we're going to continue to do that. And then this year, there's money in the budget for the filling station that, that's going to be brought up to the community to actually fill those vehicles. We can actually use them. Measure LC priorities, making sure that we are continually identifying what Measure LC, the benefits that Measure LC has brought to the community. And so as we are developing the budget, we're making sure that we're staying within those original guidelines as we identify those expenditures that are associated with Measure LC. Trulise has already mentioned 28, oh, close to 29 million in capital projects, there's another million or so in one-time items that are non-operational, but one-time items that, that are built into the budget totaling 30.2 million. And then making sure that we have available resources to sustain the special revenue and the enterprise funds activity as well. And then last but not least, making sure that parks, making sure that our communication and our relationship with the community stays intact through our budget. Making sure that those parks activities stay alive, that those parks stay open, that they're well-maintained. And, and especially those, the, those events that people really, really enjoy coming out to, that we maintain their ability to provide those services. Citywide, we're looking at a, but close to $317 million in all funds, with 223 million in expenditures. Capital improvement budget of the 28 that Trulise spoke about, one-time items of 1.3, leaving us with the projected citywide balance a year and if all money is spent as budgeted of 227 million dollars. We spent a lot of time focusing on the general fund. The general fund is where the bulk of the activities are funded from. All those things that we talked about with public safety, all the things that we talked about with parks, all of that is all funded out of the, the general fund. Excuse me. Revenues, general fund this year, 109 million, expenditures, 109 million. So we're pretty much balanced revenue to expenditures from an operational standpoint. We have $8.6 million in CIP items that are, we're able to fund out of the general fund due to surplus reserves that are carrying over from the prior years. That still leaves us, and we have some net transfers as the general fund is making sure that it can afford its activities. It's also making sure that it can afford the activities of some of those special revenue funds. Namely, in this particular case, our landscape maintenance districts are getting support from the general fund as well. Leaves a projected ending balance of 44.3 million, which is still north of our reserve requirement, 43.8. I, I would be remiss if I don't mention, though, that there, there were a couple of challenges this year. And not, not a lot of challenges, but us really acknowledging that we may have hit a peak as far as sales tax in the, in the, probably the four to five-year period that we're, that we're looking at. There were a lot of money being spent here locally during COVID and there was a lot of subsidized money being spent here locally as Councilmember Mann and I frequently discuss. And so as we're starting to see statewide trends of it starting to level off and drop. So we're not immune to those situations. So when you combine the money we get from Measure LC and our normal sales taxes amounts to about $50 million, we're down this year 2.1 million on our projections to be received for this year. It, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like a lot, a $4 million drop in those two revenue sources, but it equates to about $2.1 million. So that's when we look at 1.4 million to, to run the community center, to a loss of $2.1 million in revenues is, can be pretty significant. We're still running a $109 million general fund budget, which is the largest we've had in ever, even when compared to last year. But it's still, we have to prospectively be just somewhat cautious and, and realize that that's not a revenue that's going to be growing year over year, you know, 2% to 3% per year as we've been experiencing the last couple of years. We, it may start to level off when compared to kind of our, our peak moments during COVID. We've got to beat the death, the projects that we have, but it's not, these are not insignificant amounts that are coming out of, out of, out of the budget. Public safety building improvements, $3 million. The public safety camera system is a million dollars to expand that program. So that's a, that's tacking on in addition to millions, the $2 million that we've done the last couple of years. The AV Event and Evacuation Center. What we've done here, that's $4 million, but we've actually built in on the operational side and this is important to, to understand. Although it's $4 million on the one-time spending side, 2.5 is considered one-time spending. 1, 1.5 is considered ongoing support of that, of that facility so that we can sustain a financing solution for the project long-term. And then the community center, of course, has been built in to our, to our general programming for the, for the budget. Public safety, 10.5. We talked about parks, we talked about hydrogen. And the general fund reserves, once again, we're just revisiting the fact that we're, even with all that we spend, we'll still have just shy of a million dollars north of the reserve requirement at, at year-end. And we'll probably be adding to that as we close out fiscal year '23 and realize savings that at mid-year, we'll discuss how much is actually going into the bank, how much is going into, as Marvin talks, the green box to be reallocated, the green bucket, I'm sorry. To be reallocated on future projects later. And then we, we, reserve policy, we've talked about this the last couple of years. We have actually very well-structured reserve policy. We, we won't revisit all of that, but it amounts to about a 40% reserve requirement for the general fund. Personnel-wise, we've only added one new position. All the public safety positions that we talked about to, that are being used to build out public safety, they were actually added at mid-year last year or in the current year. So when we look year over year, we're actually only adding one position in parks. That's a grant-funded position that Sonia could, could talk more about if there's certain questions related to that. But also, you also notice the six positions that were added for AV AQMD, who are now City of Lancaster employees and we contract with AV AQMD. They were added during the mid-year of this current year as well. Measure LC. So in the prior years, we were able to, quite frankly, kind of build up two years' worth of Measure LC revenues to put together last year's project plan and, and expenditure list for Measure LC. So there's a lot of one-time items that were listed last year that we were able to bring about and, and get funded. This year, as the public safety opportunity is growing for us and as well as some of those items that are going to be regular ongoing expenses, you're going to notice that the, the list of items on Measure LC will shrink, the, the volume of money attributed to them are going to grow as, as we just start building up the, what the true intent of Measure LC was, was to help us in those particular categories of public safety, the community support through parks and whatnot. And so we're, you're going to notice as we go forward, those numbers will grow, Measure LC's list will get short, but the true intent is, is still being met there. So with that, we are all available, not just the boring guy, we are all available to answer any questions you may have.
Sheriff's contract. Who wants to? I've been complaining about carping for seven or eight years. Who wants to explain it to me, how it works, so the public will know?
Sure, I'll, well, let me explain the contract first and the amounts, so you can kind of know where we're going with that. And then I'll let Chief talk about the, the carping policy specifically. The contract's about $30 million contract now. It was previously about 27, 27 and a half million dollars. So there was a 7.5% increase in costs, which is about two and a half million dollars more that we had to pay. Our citizens had to pay for that service and got no additional service in response. So it was just additional costs associated with the contract. In there, there is a certain requirement that they provide a certain number of minutes of patrol. Those, I don't know those minutes off the top of my head, but they equate to $30 million worth of minutes. There are times at which they have-
It's based on a 56-hour work week, correct?
Correct, yeah. There are times at which they are understaffed and I think Captain can talk about what, what those numbers are. They're understaffed, which means they are either people injured on duty or they're unable to fill positions through recruiting or through lack of academies, things of that nature. So they have vacancies in that contract. I don't know if Captain, you're available to answer how many of those are?
You want to come up here to the podium where we can see you?
I'll raise it up for you.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So how many deputies are we down right now?
As of my report that was submitted to me this morning, we are 39 deputies vacant and three sergeants. A total of 42 sworn personnel.
And how many on vacation, injured?
We have another... Believe it's 20 unavailable personnel. And that is for the entire station, so that covers both our city and our county deployment.
Right. So that's 62 personnel that we're not getting?
For the station, yes.
Correct.
For this, there, there is that equitable divide, the, the sharing in the, in our deployment model. The city has the lion's share of that and the county has a smaller portion because our deployment is smaller there. The majority of the burden of these vacancies is on the city.
Okay, I'm going to ask you some questions that doesn't reflect on you because I've known you for a while and you're, this comes from the county side.
Yes, sir.
So carping, how is it done?
Personnel that are not assigned to patrol positions are reassigned as part of their normal job duties to working patrol positions. For example, a detective is taken out of their normal detective position for an eight-hour shift and placed in patrol.
Do you have any deputies that are making $320,000 a year?
I don't know.
Okay. Most deputies, it's fair to say that, most deputies don't make $320,000 a year.
As their base pay, no, sir.
Correct. And it's just from overtime and other pays that they get?
Yes, sir.
That they make larger amounts?
Yes.
And the overtime pay is not, you don't have to pay pension on the overtime pay?
I'm not aware of that, I don't have an answer for that.
George would know?
I believe the, the LA County pension rules are the same as CalPERS. I know that we do not pay any pension on the pay that's earned in, for overtime. It's just not calculated that way.
So stay there. So vacation?
Vacation is treated as normal pay, so regular pay.
So if you work overtime, you don't get more vacation?
I should not, yeah. Unless they have a comp time provision. They may have a comp time provision where they, by, by the nature of working the extra hours rather than getting paid the overtime, they're able to bank or convert that overtime into compensatory time, which turns into time off, paid time off.
Okay. So here's what I'm getting at. We're paying $320,000 a year for deputy. So carping basically is, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but for a city that has five deputies, they don't get a sergeant. They get 10 deputies, they get a sergeant. They get 20 deputies, they get two sergeants. They get, it's not exact, but that's the formula that they use.
Yes, sir.
And we don't pay for those ancillary positions?
They're, they would be considered overhead positions, yes.
Correct. So when we lose a deputy and we're down 62 and you start carping, they start pulling back from the position of the $320,000, those extra people, the detectives, the sergeants, the lieutenants, to fill the deputy's position?
Yes, sir.
And do you have mandatory overtime?
Yes.
And how often are they required to do mandatory overtime?
Currently, all sworn deputies are required to work between five and six additional overtime shifts a month, depending on what our vacancy rate for the month, month is.
Being the president of the sheriff boosters, it's a little alarming that when other captains have came on, they've asked for bulletproof vests, they've asked for guns, they've asked for everything. You've asked for bunk beds?
I did.
Okay? Because the deputies have to sleep at the station because it's back-to-back-to-back. Is that correct?
It is, in some cases, yes.
Would you consider that dangerous?
Yes, accumulatively, yes, it can be.
Okay, and I asked the other questions about vacation, overtime and all that because this is beginning to be a way of life with the county. It's not that they're going to fix it. They're not giving us what we paid for, okay? They're using the extra personnel to man those hours, which they don't have to pay vacation time to. They don't have to pay pension to. They don't have to pay those ancillary costs that are there. So it's cheaper for them to run time and a half than it is for them to run a normal person. George, is that correct? No, come up to the thing and say-
100% correct. In, in most cases, and I've done this evaluation with another agency when we were comparing it, if, I believe the county's rate, pension rate is probably in the 80 percentile. So for every $100,000 employee, they're spending another $80,000 in pension. We are paying that on the contract. But if they are filling those shifts with, with overtime, they're not paying that pension amount. So for that hour work, we are paying for the pension being associated with that hour, but it's not being paid down to the employee because they don't pay pension on overtime costs.
Correct, and this is just not a Lancaster problem.
No.
This is a county problem through all the jurisdictional cities that participate.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
Marvin, I didn't mean to interrupt, but for the audience and, and maybe the people that would be watching it from home, what's the total deputy count for the station supposed to be?
It's supposed to be 192 deputy sheriffs and 29 sergeants.
So we're down 33%?
Actually, it's 20, our sworn rate is about 20%.
So how many deputies do you have per shift?
It, it varies, our deployment is, our day shift has more personnel on it, and PM shift followed by that, and then our early morning shift is a little bit thinner. But it, it breaks down to, to roughly... I believe we're, day shift has ninety, roughly ninety personnel on it. That includes the detectives and special teams, and then the PMs and early mornings are split about sixty, forty of the remainder personnel.
Okay. So Chuck, you're back there for the county, did you wanna add anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, I think it's time we stop the carping. So, with the budget, I think we need to do whatever legal, we need to give the, the county a thirty-day notice that we're not gonna carp anymore. I find this extremely dangerous. When deputies are working back to back and they're being forced, and they're sleeping at the station, they're going to eventually make a mistake. We just got a seven and a half percent rate increase based upon liability. Is that correct, George?
A portion of it was related to, to the liability side, but a lot of it was related to raises that were already authorized.
We get little or no say in the liability trust fund. Correct?
Correct.
So, I think it's time that we notify the county we're not doing carping anymore, that we're not going to do it. And I think it's time that we give them notice, and it's time that we ask the other cities to participate. And if it takes legal action to stop this, we need to stop it. And I'm not saying stop the deployment of deputies. I'm saying go to court, stop the process, and find out from court who is right. Because our deputies are being strained, they're, it's becoming dangerous out there. They're, they're just overworked. They're, they're doing a third more work than they should be doing. And it's, it's dangerous, and we're not getting what we paid for. If we extrapolate the three twenty for the deputies that we're not getting, it's nine and a half million dollars. So Allison, what can we do?
Let me dig into the contract and see what our rights and remedies are.
John, I'm done with you, thank you very much. And again, it has nothing to do with you.
Thanks, John. So Allison, last month, I think it was last month, at the NCTC meeting, as we do each time we have a meeting, all the jurisdictions report out, and I think I counted, and I could go back to my notes, because I don't have them exactly in front of me, but I mentioned this in, when I was reviewing the budget with Jason and George and Tralese. But collectively, between Santa Clarita, City of Palmdale, and us, they were down close to two hundred deputies between the three stations. And I heard the Santa Clarita gentleman, I think he was a sergeant that spoke, he was highly alarmed about the level of frustration that they had in relationship to the crazy overtime and the risk factor. And that's when I spoke to the supervisor and said, you know, we need to have some kind of closure here. And then I was unaware that we got hit with, until I was reviewing the budget this last week, that we got hit with a seven percent increase, which is absurd when somebody already can't fulfill the contract, and oh, by the way, we're gonna take another increase. And I could care less, I mean, again, I'm not gonna follow anybody that works in position, they have their, their due with, with increases in salary, we all have that expectation. But, but it's not that, so much that as it is when we're forty-two deputies down. I'd much rather, if that's the case, let's take the money and make Rod responsible for it and put deputies out on the street from our side. I mean, I would, I don't think that's the solution, but at least that wasn't the thought process since I've been on the council, but somebody's gotta be accountable. And what'd you say it was, how much money, nine million?
Nine and a half million. And it's a seven and a half percent rate increase. And just for the record, I would never be in favor of changing the sheriffs for Rod's side. So I'm not advocating that at all. So, that's not what I'm doing. I'm saying we are supposed to be stewards of the people's money. We've been complaining about this, I have personally, for over seven years. Every budget thing, I've complained about it. And nothing gets done. So, at this budget, I'm gonna say no more. We cannot do it for this. We cannot be held up for nine and a half million dollars that we're not getting the service for.
Yeah, I, I didn't wanna misspeak, so I don't want somebody to go back and say, oh, Ken's advocating, taking nine million out. My point was, if we can't get the deputies on the street, it doesn't do us any good to get just the nine million dollars back either. That's not the solution either, the solution is, is to fix the problem. So, I really, that was my point, is what we should be doing with the nine million dollars is getting our deputies worth, and not in overtime. The business where I came from, you know, fifty-two years in business, overtime was a real bad word, because you got, you just can't get the productivity out of somebody when they're tired. And so we much rather pay straight time for the job done, as opposed to try to get it accomplished in overtime. Just does, it's just not good business, so.
Daryl?
I totally agree, I, I agree on your line of thinking about dangerous it is. I can remember when I was working twelve hours a day, six days a week, driving an hour and a half up and back, and I had my brother with me, and we were commuting. And I said, hey, man, you see those trees in the road? And he said, what you talking about? I said, it's trees in the road. And I went to swerve, and he said, pull over, you're tired. There was no trees in the road. Your body will shut down on you. We're talking about men who has to make split decision. Their life can be taken, somebody else's life can be taken. This is, this is very unsafe and unfair to them and the public. And I agree with Marvin and the rest of the council that we have to be good stewards. And whether that is splitting more duties to our new safety police and what we can do. It just, it's bad, not only that, Marvin, when you pull a detective, then cases aren't solved like they should be. And you know there's a timeframe with cases being solved, seventy-two hours. You know, all of us have seen the first forty-eight. So now you got a man that should be working those eight to twelve hours on a case that some mother or, or some family is hoping that that detective finds a, some type of, of clue or something, and he's out beating the street. You know, this is, this is not acceptable, so we shouldn't put either our citizens or our policemen in that type of line of fire like that. And it's very irresponsible, and it's almost a bullying if you ask me. It, it feels like we're being bullied. You're gonna pay it because you have no other choice. And I, I like, I'm like, our Vice Mayor, I don't like bully, so that's the way it comes across, and we're gonna stand up to it.
Raj?
Yes, absolutely, Marv, I'm absolutely with you on this. I think, I have a question, John, that why, what's, what is the reason? Like, why is like, that's the big number to be on a short?
We are, the department is having a hard time recruiting personnel to fill our vacancies. It, it seems, the, the numbers I shared with you seem bad, but we are actually in better shape than many other stations in the county. It, we're, we've been authorized for eight academy classes this year. I believe only two of them have been filled so far. We're just, we're having an extremely hard time recruiting. It, it's, it's not just a county problem, that's a statewide problem recruiting for law enforcement currently.
I'm with you on this, Marv, I think we have to do something about it.
Yeah, and you bring that up, you, you know, you point that out as maybe one of the root causes. And then we had the mayor of the Los Angeles city say they're gonna go on a hiring spree, and they've got, I don't know, what was it, I think it was like forty-five, it was some crazy figure, like forty-five hundred deputies? They were gonna hire? So boy, that sounds like an intersection where the big crash gonna happen too. So if they put their foot on it where they've not been paying attention, and now they're gonna start hiring, and they've got that many deputies short too on the city side, holy smoke.
So Allison, you've heard the council, they're in agreement that they don't want to pass the budget with the public safety portion in it.
Understood.
How do we go about that?
So, what we're doing tonight is directing staff to schedule the budget for consideration at the next meeting. Tonight is not approval of the budget. So, this is a scheduling item for you this evening, so proceeding with this allows the budget to proceed timely at the next meeting, and then at the next meeting, we can set up the action item to allow the carve-out of the sheriff's contract, if that is the pleasure of the, of the council.
Can we make notification of the county tomorrow?
I, yes, absolutely.
Okay, can we start legal proceedings or look into it?
We can look into it, we're not agendized for authorizing proceedings, legal proceedings tonight, so-
I'm not asking that, I'm asking, can we?
Can we, can we look?
Can we look at it?
Yeah, I, I will look at it, yes.
And, and just for clarification, Vice Mayor, we're not saying that we're trying to kill our contract, we're just saying that we want to make sure we pay for what we get.
We are supposed to be stewards of the money.
Right.
And letting the county take nine and a half million dollars from our coffers when we're the largest contract, it's not like we're afraid to pay. We've paid and paid and paid and paid, and they've taken and taken and taken. I talked to the supervisor, she's unaware of this practice continuing. Her understanding was that this practice was eliminated two or three years ago. It wasn't, it continues. Okay, and it's become a way of life with the county to do their budget. And it's on our backs, and it shouldn't be anymore. That's nine and a half million dollars that we can do something with. If we're not getting the deputies, it's, it's a matter of safety first, it's the financial aspect of it, and it's just not right. So do we need to put any contingencies on this, Allison?
We do not tonight, but I will work with staff on appropriate contingencies for the budget adoption at the next council meeting.
Does staff understand the parameters that we're asking you to do?
We understand completely and agree.
Chuck, do you understand what we're asking you to do? Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Yeah, the bottom?
No, I think the recommendation-
Are we just receiving and filing?
Uh, no, you are a direct, a, a motion to, um, direct staff to schedule the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget and five-year capital improvement plan for adoption on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and on behalf of California Choice Energy Authority, similarly, direct staff to schedule the CCEA proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget adoption for June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, based on what the city attorney read back to me, now that I have some clarity, that's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion second, let's vote. Passes with four yes votes. Thank you, gentlemen, great job.
Thank you.
Council reports, Daryl?
I had a great time at our updated, state-of-the-art, wonderful Lancaster Community Center, I was blown away. I remember, ooh, when I become deputy mayor, twenty eighteen? When they first, the city first tackled that, and it was a mess in there, it was just destroyed, defaced, graffiti, it just did not look anything like it looks right now. And they have everything from studios to classrooms to maker spaces to state-of-the-art daycare center. It's just, it's just phenomenal. And then for them to unveil their new logo, I was just truly blown away, me and Tralese. I think his children didn't wanna shake my hand because they was too busy trying to get in there. But it was just a wonderful space, wonderful, we have great workers that are looking for the community to come out. I believe they're open every day till eight o'clock. They're not open on Saturday, from what I hear yet, but they will be in September. But I was just blown away, it's phenomenal place. So I, I want all the city, come out to your new community center, it's a wonderful place, you will find something for everyone and anyone there. Yeah, great time.
Raj? I don't have any ideas.
Ken? AVTA is still looking good, we're still doing all-electric. ABA QMD is looking for grants, so we can do some filling stations that are hydrogen, filling stations at our current station. Jocelyn, on the planning commission, do they have requirements that all new stations have at least a spot for?
Yes, they do.
Okay. So that's what I've been telling everyone, so that's, it's good that it's true. And the fair is moving forward with evacuation center. The Secretary of Agriculture will be here on the twenty-second. It's a big deal, they're bringing a check for a little over twenty million dollars to help pay for it. So we're looking forward to that. With that-
Oh, I have one more thing.
Okay.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I want everyone that is able to come celebrate at Steve Owens Sergeant Memorial Park, our Juneteenth celebration this Sunday, from ten-thirty to, I believe, to six PM. If you're into a worship service, yours truly will be leading a worship service from ten-thirty to twelve. And then after that, we have a concert, we have just, it's just phenomenal what the city stakeholders and the city in partnership with the city stakeholders have done. There's food trucks, it's just gonna be a wonderful time. I'm a little down that it's on Father's Day, but I understand, you know, they don't treat Father's Day like Mother's Day, but that's okay, we'll deal with that, you know, we, we love our mamas. But we want everyone to come out, the city of Lancaster, last year was about a thousand people out, so get there early so you can get a good part. And let's come celebrate one of the greatest holidays for America, when they allowed the freedom of slaves to be a part of this great country. Ten-thirty.
Sean?
And bring your dads, and celebrate.
Nothing with the Housing Authority, nothing with finance, nothing with the Power Authority, nothing with the Succession Agency City Manager.
Fourth of July is right around the corner, so we have a extravaganza planned, we'll be talking about more of that, you'll start seeing that in our, some of our social media releases. But what's key, it's gonna happen this year, it's gonna be a little bit different, we're gonna have a robust illegal fireworks prevention program. Now with our new public safety office and our drone and everything else we got going on, this is a continuing complaint we get from our community. Your council, we continually get it from you guys as council. So Rod and his team and his code enforcement officers and deter some of them. As you know, we see it, and there's a lot of it, but hopefully we'll get the message out about how it's illegal, and there are fines associated with it, and there are safety concerns with it, from fires to health safety, to a number of different things, so we'll be actively enforcing that. There'll be a new public safety hotline that we were creating, so we'll put that number out on our social media as well. So we want people to celebrate legally at our event. I think we got a motorcycle raid or motorcycle something or other coming up and fireworks, so it's gonna be a great night at Fourth of July, so save your money on buying illegal fireworks. Spend your time at the fairgrounds to watch a great show and celebrate with the community.
Mr. City Manager, is all fireworks illegal or just certain ones?
All fireworks are legal and, and, yeah.
Is that it?
Uh, no, we got a summer meals program too, on a higher, on a better note. We're gonna be, we're gonna be feeding a lot of kids at our parks. So we have a summer meals program that's kicking off at Tierra Bonita Park, so between June twentieth, daily, there's gonna be a eleven AM to one PM food being served to our, our children who may, may be home alone sometimes, or may just need to, need a good, good meal. The batting cages we mentioned are renovated, Marvin's gonna be hitting bombs out there, what I talked about, so we are gonna have a home run derby contest, it's gonna be Marvin against Daryl. We're gonna see, we know Ken can't-
We need somebody else, please, that's not fair. We need somebody else, please, that's not fair. I'll give him a ten homerun lead.
Go out to the batting cages, it's a fun night out, take a date. At Lancaster Juneteenth Celebration, thank you, Daryl, you mentioned that. Cool Summer Nights starts kicking off at Jane Reynolds Park on Wednesdays, um, June through July. So look for the website for that. And then Moa Grand Opening video, we got a short video of the Moa Grand reopening, uh, so we'll play that real quick. So some great exhibitions out there, go check that out. The LPAK Foundation, Raj was our, was your representative for the council at the LPAK Foundation, The Murder Mystery. As you know, they are the nonprofits supporting LPAK and do wonderful work for, uh, a lot of our youth and, um, a lot of the arts there, so we got a short video about that. So wonderful event from LPAK and support that organization, they do a wonderful job. We also had Chick-fil-A open, for those of you who like chicken sandwiches. For some reason, there's thousands of people like chicken sandwiches every day. Can't figure it out, but it was a hit. Busy out there, so maybe wait a week and see, see how the lines go down. And the best part of the night is we had our, uh, planning team win an award. The American, uh, uh, a, a video on that as well. You do get to see one of our staff look like she was doing the Trump dance, so that's kind of cool in the video. So, um, let's play the video.
The city of Lancaster Planning Division is an incredibly creative team. They have gone above and beyond to create a VMP program that is now award-winning by the American Planning Association. This is a fantastic team that represents good planning, is committed to the city of Lancaster community and doing amazing things and we're so grateful to have them.
So salute to our planning staff, not only they've won great wars, but. And of course, we will give planning the credit, but you guys, obviously the leadership in doing those programs, but also setting the stage for being business-friendly, uh, being efficient, um, being kind and customer service-oriented. All starts with leadership, so thank you to the planning team and thank you guys at council.
City Clerk?
This is a time to address the city council agency authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each unless a different time limit is announced. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Fran Saraseras?
Oh, don't let me pinch you in there. Okay. You good? Yeah. Okay. Can you see me?
I can see you, Fran.
Okay, good. Good evening, Vice Mayor, staff and of course the chamber, I mean, the staff. And ladies and gentlemen, my name is Fran Saraseras. And my first thing is, I want to commend Lancaster council staff on the graffiti. I have to go downtown now because I'm a commissioner for the county. But four or five times a month, which means I have to go through. If you go to downtown, you're going to, it is awful. It, the graffiti down there, everything is covered with graffiti. When I, I was talking to the driver who was taking me to my meeting and I says, you know, that's one thing about Lancaster, we don't have graffiti. And if we do, our mayor and our council gets on it right away. Uh, that's one of the reasons I love living up here, besides the people and the city. And that's why I'm always working for you guys the best I can. So I want to thank you all for what you do for us. You, and I, you know, I used to go downtown when I was younger, when I was ten and twelve, thirteen, fourteen, shopping where there's May Company, Boox, there was, uh, Newberry's, Woolworth. I used to go get our ice cream sandwiches and we would walk from Second Street all the way to Ninth Street. Well, no problem. Shoot, you wouldn't even catch me riding on my chair a half a block, the way it is now. Oh, it's, anyway. I'm glad I got that on because, oh, it's, 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 it's something that's unreal. It really is, it, you look like you're living in a third world atmosphere. Okay, that's that. And again, thank you from the bottom of my heart and thank you, Lord, for allowing our people to do their, to do their duty and do what they do for us. I do have something to say though about the community center that you had, what, a week ago or so? And I got wind of it the same day, on Friday mid-morning. I didn't know anything about it. And I said, well, how come I? I'm talking to myself and I'm talking to the person who's telling me. So I don't, is my minute up already? Uh, I couldn't, uh, I, I didn't understand why I didn't hear about it. I didn't get an email. I looked and I even got the paper out, the neighborhood paper. It was nothing in the paper about it. The, and the reason my friend knew was because a friend told her she hadn't, it wasn't advertised. And I can't get noticed the same day because there's no way in the world I'm going to make it because I have to go by access. And I would have loved to have gone, but, you know, communication, it's got, because we have a lot of seniors and a lot of people that want to go to these things, but if they're not told in, in time, then they're not going to make it. Anyway, yeah.
Thank you.
Light a cigarette. Thank you very much, though.
Thank you.
God bless you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the audience like to speak? Come on up.
Okay, I was just wondering how to spell carpeting or carping and what's the definition of that? For the sheriff's department?
You can talk to the captain afterwards and he'll give you all the different definitions you need.
Cadre of Administrative Reserve Personnel.
Say that again?
Cadre of Administrative Reserve Personnel. Rolls right off the tongue.
It's pretty good, a city attorney.
It's really. Daryl had to look in his purse what meant.
Uh, it is called a sling, a sling.
Okay, with that, we stand adjourned.